Diane's way.
So, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Wonderful. We are live.
Are we live? Okay. Good evening. Welcome, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Natalie Jektorowicz, District 34 School Board President. Tonight's meeting was convened earlier at 6:30. We started an executive session, and now we are going to begin our regular board meeting. Joining me tonight are my fellow board members Jim Bomstark, John Hagy, Katie Jones, Mike Corman, Scott Nelson, and Diane Stefani. Also joining us tonight is our administrative team, including Dr. Dane Delly, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Dr. Matt Silverman, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Eric Miller, Executive Director of Human Resources, Dr. Heather Hopkins, Executive Director of Student Services, Mary Garrity, Executive Director for Instructional Innovation, Brian Engel, Director of Communications and Strategic Planning, Kathy Kajijian, Director of Operations, Steve Ruelle, Director of EL Bilingual Programs, Raquel Kim, Assistant Director for Student Services, Kristin Casillas, District Nurse Kathleen Lean, and our Board Recording Secretary Kathy Segal. The first item on our agenda tonight is approvals. We have two items on approval. The first is to, the first is tonight's agenda. Board, may I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
No move.
Katie Jones.
Second, Jim Bomstark.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposing? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the December 14th, 2020 Regular and Executive Board Meeting minutes. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Jim Bomstark.
Second.
Diane Stefani.
Thank you. Again, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. That brings us to our communications portion of tonight's agenda, and we begin with superintendent comments, so I will turn it over to Dr. Delly.
Good evening, board members and those who are joining our meeting this evening. It's nice to see everyone. I do have a few items I'd like to cover this evening. The first is a very important recognition. The parent and volunteer organizations of District 34 are not only important partners in educating the children of Glenview, but they're a critical support system for our staff, for our students, and for our families. This is true really at any time, but it is especially true during difficult times. And the support of our partners has been a real lifeline for many in the community. The Glenview Education Foundation, the Deborah Gelfand Children's Foundation, and our PTA organizations have all asked repeatedly, what are the needs and how can we help? What can we do to help? And they have always taken action. They've helped provide with school supplies, with food and funding directly to families in need or to programs that support our community. They will share more specifically some of the ways in which they've created a very unique and caring and strong safety net for those in our community, and they've really been the foundation in our culture of caring in District 34. And so we have a little bit of sharing we'd like to do, and I think Kathy, at this point, I can, I can ask for your assistance. Thank you.
Excellent. Yes, I am going to start with just a bit of some important collaboration that all of these organizations, the PTAs, the Glenview Education Foundation, and the Gelfand Foundation work together to give some clarity to all of us on what they do, where they intersect, and how they're unique. So this is something that our organizations work together to say, you know, this is who we are, the key items that we cover for our families and our community, where they work together, and where they are unique in their service to our community. So I thought this was really interesting, and we are going to be getting this out into the community. We wanted to share it tonight. This is kind of the launch of this image that I think we'll see a lot in our community as we see more of what the PTAs, the GEF, and Gelfand do. So I am sharing that, but then I am going to turn it over first to Beth Conlin, who's going to share about the work of our PTAs. So Beth, I'll pull up your presentation. Give me one second to do that. And you can just point me, tell me how to move along, and we'll let the PTAs talk about the work that they've done.
All right. Thank you so much, Kathy. Can you, you're in the middle of the presentation. Can you go back a few slides to the beginning?
There we go.
Okay, all right. That's perfect. Thank you. So thank you so much for inviting me. I'm Beth Conlin, and I'm currently in my second year as District 34 PTA Council President. Before that, I was President of the Hankin-Hoffman PTA for three years. So I am a true believer in the power of the PTA and know firsthand how much they can accomplish when they work together. As I'm sure you all know, our district is fortunate enough to have four very active PTAs. Each cluster's PTA is unique, and while they all have their own ways of doing things, everyone is working towards the common goal of building a stronger school community and enriching the educational experiences of all District 34 students. I believe most parents are aware, oh, I'm sorry. Can you go to the next slide, Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah. So I do believe that most parents are aware of the PTA and know some of what we do. I think probably if you mention the PTA to parents, their first response would be, oh, they're the ones that are always asking me to volunteer and get involved. And they're right. The PTAs are constantly looking for opportunities and planning events that bring people together and build stronger ties to our schools. In addition to the more obvious teacher-staff appreciation luncheons and activities that we plan, a huge part of our role includes getting volunteers to help support the schools when an extra set of hands are needed. At the K-5 levels, there are room parents for each classroom whose main function is to support the homeroom teachers. PTA volunteers can be found throughout the year, shelving books in the LRC, hanging artwork in the hallways, escorting students to and from hearing and vision screenings, fitting costumes for the school play, helping with school pictures, counting and transporting food to the pantry during food drives. The list goes on and on. And with every hour spent volunteering, we see how beneficial it is to the students, families, and schools to form these bonds. The PTAs send out frequent communications to families to reinforce the connections they've made and to keep everyone informed about what's going on. Last year in the months leading up to the referendum vote, the PTAs used their weekly communications to effectively advocate for the referendum and encourage families to talk to their neighbors about the positive effects its passage would have on our entire community. The PTAs are also proud to sponsor a variety of parent education opportunities throughout the year. Since the PTAs focus so much time and energy on engaging families and building community, I don't think that people always realize the extent to which they are able to also financially support our schools. Because of the generosity of our families, the PTAs have been able to make meaningful contributions to District 34 schools and enrich the educational experiences of all District 34 students. Can you go to the next slide? So in the past five years, the PTAs have contributed almost $140,000 towards capital improvements and learning space upgrades at our schools. Some examples of these improvements include outdoor tables, new playgrounds, flexible seating for the LRCs that allow for collaborative learning, audiovisual equipment, contributions towards the Springman Courtyard redesign, and water bottle filling stations. Next slide. The PTAs have also spent $300,000 on supplemental educational resources and grade-level learning materials since the 2016-17 school year. This includes fine arts programs like Dive Into Art, lots and lots of books for the LRCs and classroom libraries, a podcast studio for the middle school, subscriptions for eBooks, audiobooks, and magazines, recess and PE equipment, and soft start kits, just to name a few. Next slide. Finally, many of the special in-school student enrichment activities our students get to take part in are made possible because of the PTAs. We are fortunate to be able to sponsor author visits and writers' workshops, the Artist in Residence Program, student plays and performances, field and spirit days, in-school assemblies, eighth-grade graduation parties at the middle school, and cultural arts experiences. Next slide. So since the 2016-17 school year, District 34 PTAs have contributed more than $650,000 to various efforts that directly affect the students and schools of District 34. Now, keep in mind, those last few slides were not comprehensive lists. They were merely examples to help you understand the different ways the PTAs use their funds. So more than $650,000 in five short years is a pretty impressive number, but our investment in time and energy into engaging the families and students of District 34 and building a strong school community are just as important. So thank you so much for inviting me and letting me share a little bit more about our PTAs and what we do, and really just bragging about how awesome they are for a few minutes.
And that absolutely is awesome. Thank you. Thanks to all our PTAs. Next, I'm going to pull up a presentation, and the Glenview Education Foundation, Julie Moon, is going to share a little bit about GEF. So give me just a second to pull up that presentation. I also have to make sure that I am sharing my audio, because we're going to show a video as well. And here we go. Julie, give me one second. All right. Are you ready? Is Julie here? Oh, okay. Hold on one second. I'm gonna stop sharing, and...
Where's Julie?
Here we go. All right. Julie, I'm so sorry. I thought I had pulled you over as a panelist before, but now you are here. And are you ready?
I'm ready. Yeah.
Awesome.
I'm here, but I couldn't...
Here but not here.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, same thing. You can tell me, direct me to move your presentation when you need to.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. I, we definitely, I definitely appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. And as you'll see, all three organizations are really happy and proud to support the schools, but I'm excited tonight to just explain a little bit more specifically how Glenview Education Foundation works. And as Kathy mentioned, my name is Julie Moon, and I am the Chair for Glenview Education Foundation this year, otherwise known as GEF. Basically, who we are, we're just a volunteer-run organization made up of District 34 parents, and we raise money specifically for innovative, high-impact pilot programs from, that are directly requested from District 34 teachers as well as administrators. We're kind of like the research and development arm of the district where we can test the different programs and see how they work and make, and then the district can make kind of revisions and then roll them out to the district as a whole, in some cases. And thanks to our very generous GEF donors, GEF has been able to donate over $2 million since we started to all District 34 schools. Next, Kathy. We did actually design or develop a video that shows some of the grants in action as well as some additional details about GEF. So Kathy, if you can go ahead and hopefully show that now.
Yeah, I will have to stop sharing and then reshare, it looks like. Okay.
Nothing's easy.
It's not difficult. It's just a few-step process. So we're okay. I do need to pull it up here. Okay. Now I'll be able to do it. Thank you, everyone, for your patience in letting me pull it up. I promise it is worth the wait. Okay, here we go.
We are a team of dedicated volunteers who support teaching and learning in District 34. We focus on funding innovative, high-impact pilot programs. Great ideas developed by D-34 teachers and administrators. The Glenview Education Foundation, also known as GEF, provides grant-based funding for new, critical, innovative programs. Grants are open to any staff member, and there is no limit to the number of grants a teacher may apply for or be awarded. So we encourage previous grant recipients to keep their thinking caps on and reapply with new ideas. Since 2001, the foundation has awarded more than $2 million to all District 34 schools, from Maker modules, 21st century learning spaces, middle school STEM makers, to recital nights, and STEM family events. The grants we approve focus on three initiatives, which are aligned with the district's strategic plan. The initiatives are student success, where we provide opportunities to pilot programming that enriches curriculum; educator growth, where we provide opportunities to individuals or small groups of staff for professional development, collaboration, and leadership, which will ultimately enhance student success; community involvement, where we provide opportunities for parents and other community members to enhance student learning. Here are a few ways you can get involved and support our mission. Consider joining the GEF Board. Each spring, we recruit board members to fill the various roles the following school year. We also encourage you to participate in all of our upcoming events. To learn more, visit us at GEF34.org.
All right, and I will pull the presentation back up.
Thank you. Maybe I should have done the video at the end. Sorry about that.
It's all good.
All right. Well, and you saw a few of our different grants that we highlighted in the video. There's definitely more additional grants that are listed on our GEF34.org webpage. So if you're interested in kind of learning about additional grants that we have, that we have approved and supported, definitely check that out. We definitely have events as well. An upcoming event is St. Patrick's Day Bingo, which is going to be free for District 34 families. We had a similar event for Halloween, which was a big success. This one is going to be March 12th, Friday night at 6:00 PM. Again, details are going to be available on our GEF34.org website. And it is again going to be hosted by the wonderfully talented Kim Hiller-Green from the Laughing Academy. Next, Kathy. And Scavenger Hunt is also happening this, sometime this spring. We're still working on all the details, but we're excited to have this as our first annual Scavenger Hunt since COVID kind of put the kibosh on it last, last spring. We already have event sponsors, McPherson, Westhoff Compass, and addition, some additional sponsors, Wintrust and 12 Tone Music School. So definitely be on the lookout for those upcoming events. And I think I mentioned most of these on, on the video as well, but definitely stay in the loop about our grants and our events, upcoming events on our website, and then, of course, we have a Facebook and Twitter account as well, and the links are listed there. And of course, as I also mentioned, joining the board, GEF could not exist without District 34 parent volunteers. We do recruit each spring for board members to fill the roles the following school year, and we definitely would love to have all of you join, so consider, consider joining us. And then, of course, donations. We rely on all of you from District 34 parents to meet our annual fundraising goals. So please help us to raise money to fund those really important pilot grants that will directly impact your children. And that's it. Thanks again for letting me speak.
Thank you. And our third organization in our Venn diagram of caring support to the district is the Deborah Gelfand Children's Foundation, and we have Barbara Silver and Zach Gelfand, who will present about the newly-formed Gelfand Foundation and talk about its recent evolution and all that it's done. And I'm going to pull up the presentation. Give me one second. Here we go. Okay, now I can share. Okay. Barbara and Zach.
Well, I'll start off, and I'm going to take you back 30 years ago when this was a fund, and Deborah Gelfand was a very active parent volunteer in District 34. Her children went to Westbrook and Glen Grove. She gave an amount, numerous amount of time and money to the schools. She was diagnosed with cancer on March 17th of 1990 and passed away July 4th of that year. Before she passed away, her one wish is that she should be remembered. I gave her my promise. I wasn't sure how I was going to do it, but I remember being standing at Westbrook. It was in the fall, and I was with a friend of mine. We were picking up our children from kindergarten, and I looked at a little boy's feet, and the shoes were tattered, and I said, that is the way we're going to do it. So we had the idea that we were going to start buying shoes for less fortunate children, but we thought, had the idea, but we didn't have the resources. So we started to think about our fundraising goals, and the first one was a very exuberant at Glen Grove, where we were doing fundraising through items that were donated throughout the district. And we made quite a bit of money that year, and we were very excited, and we were off to a great start. But then we were doing different functions, but they would bring us more money. We had the Jesse White tumblers one year. We had a poetry reader. But our most favorite one is when I worked with one of the music teachers, and she worked with the different chorus groups, which brought the parents in, which brought silent auction, a pizza dinner, and it was quite, quite fun for everyone. So we were off and running. We were building up the money for the fund, and the fund was lasted for 29 years until someone very active in their school district and in the district office came to me and said, have you ever thought about turning this into a foundation? And when she said to me, a foundation will have this last forever, I knew that's exactly what I wanted. So this, we started it as a foundation with a 501(c)(3), and when Debbie passed away, she left six sons behind, ages 12 to 2, and there's the two-year-old Zach, who is very much a part of what we've done for several years. So Zach, I'm going to let you take it away and talk about the foundation.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Silver. First of all, yes, Westbrook student here, go pandas. As, as those who have attended Westbrook or have children who attend Westbrook, one of the key features of the site is, is as soon as you walk in the front door, you see the, the tree sculpture. That is a gift that my parents had donated to the school. I would say probably 1988 or 1989, was built in our garage and hauled over from, we used to live right by, right by Glen Grove, hauled down the road. And so when we made the transition from a found to, or a fund to a foundation, it was clearly the, clearly the symbol that we wanted to, to express to the community. And so you'll see that in a lot of our communications. And as you look at the, the top right corner, I'll, I'll direct you over there. A wonderful board member with, with children in the district came up with an idea for our very first fundraiser as a foundation called the Giving Tree Project. You may have seen these, these signs. They were right outside the Starbucks in the Glen, right around the start of the school year. And, and what we did is we, we put up a tree for each one of the schools and allowed parents to donate or community members to donate, to buy a leaf. And then we would have people write nice little encouraging messages on the leaf for kids who are just coming back to school, and those were posted out in the community for the month of September. And it was a really great fundraiser. It did bring in a good chunk of money for us in, in the early parts of the foundation. We've also had some community partnerships, so I'll, I'll now direct you to the, the bottom-left corner here, where we partnered with the Kraft Heinz R&amp;D team out of their, their office at Waukegan and Willow to provide kits for, for kids across the, across the district with, with books, with STEM materials, with stress relievers, and distributed those to the schools in, in late October. So if you saw any of those, that was, that was a great collaboration between Kraft Heinz and the Gelfand Foundation. And our most recent big community development style spend has been the Little Library. So if you, if you haven't been to, to the schools recently, you'll see these outside of each one of the, each one of the schools, free little library with donated books by, by members of the community. They're each painted with the, the school's colors, and a little fun fact, they were built and painted by GBS students who attended each one of the schools in their, in their shop program. We do want to say a huge thank you to everyone who has, who has donated either time or money to the, to the foundation. We did want to share a little bit around the, the, the way that we've distributed those funds. We are, as, as Mrs. Silver mentioned, we are a 501(c)(3), 100%.
Yeah.
Julie? You're not on me. It's okay. 100% of our, our donations are sent right back into the community, so we have no administration fees or, or anything like that. We do want to share, with the move to a foundation, one of the key benefits for us was that we're able to solicit donations. And so when we were a fund, we were able to, to donate somewhere on the order of $18,000 to $22,000 a year. And in the first, for, I'm sorry, the back half of, of 2020, we were able to, we were able to actually donate $35,000, and that is directly a result of being able to, to move to a foundation. As you'll see below, just a little bit of where that's actually gone. About half of it has been between clothing and shoes, so the, the original intention of the, the fund lives on. The, the next greatest expenditure has been rental assistance. So along with other organizations in the community, the Gelfand Foundation is a funder of last resort to help families stay in their homes. And in November and December, that has really become one of our key expenditures. Through the end of the year is about $8,000. As of the, the moment that I sent this to Kathy, we had approved $13,600 in rental assistance in January. That's actually up another $2,600 on top of that. So the, the contributions that, that you all are providing to, to our organization are really helping the children and community make sure that they've got a stable, stable home environment. Further, it's books, it's school supplies, it's, it's other donations. You know, those are the, the top two, though, are really the, the key ongoing expenses that, that the foundation has. If you want to get involved, if you do want to learn more information, it's deborregelfand.org. It couldn't be too much easier. You can see my contact information, Mrs. Silver's contact information on there if you do have any questions or do want to get involved or, or, or learn more about the organization. And also you can follow us on Facebook at facebook.com/deborahgelfand. So that is, that's all we have. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Zach and Barbara. Thank you, everyone, all of our community partners. We do have a page on our website that, that lists those partners, and we will continue to share their information as they... We do have a page on our website that, that lists those partners, and we will continue to share their information as they share their generosity with us. Back to you, Dr. Delli.
Thank you. I don't know if Natalie, you or any other board members might like to comment on anything before I, I'm going to get into some comments about hybrid and vaccines next. And I don't want to, I don't want to break the, the positive vibe. I mean, I, for one, just want to re-thank our, our community partners for their time and their generosity and for all of those who contribute to those causes.
Yes, I want to add my expression of gratitude as well. We're so fortunate to have these three organizations, GEF, PTA, and the Gelfand Foundation, supporting our students and our families. This is what makes our community such an awesome place to live. So thanks to all of you for all of your hard work. We're honored that you came and joined, joined us tonight. Thank you so much. And I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Delli.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I would like to make a few comments this evening about our return to hybrid and share a little bit of information about vaccinations, although that is a, an ongoing and evolving topic, which you'll, you'll see in a moment. But with respect to our return to hybrid, I want to say that I remain very impressed with how students, parents, and staff members have transitioned back into our hybrid learning model. Our metric dashboard looks much better than it did when we entered the adaptive pause in late November. It's not quite as good as it was three weeks ago, but you know, that's, that's the nature of the dashboard. It will go through periods of time that look better than others. But we, we are very mindful of it nonetheless. It informs our decision-making. I was confident that we could re-enter hybrid. And so far, we've been very successful at it. And it's because our students, our parents, and our staff members work together to make the model work. So I do want to thank everyone for that. I, I fully acknowledge that there are some, and I'm one of them, quite frankly, who wish we could have children in the buildings more often on a more regular basis. Our mitigation strategies in the schools in our hybrid model continue to work. And that's because we continue to follow the guidance that has been given to us and that we have shared with staff members and students and parents. We have still not seen spread within the schools. So that continues to be good news and is in large part because we are following the mitigation measures that we have in place. We want nothing more than to have our children return to school as they knew it pre-pandemic. That remains our primary objective. While we are now in Tier One as associated with Restore Illinois, if you look at the categories within that, the health safety guidelines for in-person learning have gone largely unchanged. There's, there's been some small modifications and tweaks to things like quarantining, for instance. But most of that guidance has gone unchanged since we entered the pandemic. Most notably is the six-foot social distancing guideline. And until that guideline is either relaxed, meaning made less than six feet, or eliminated altogether, we do not have a practical solution for bringing back all children all day, every day. We are, however, looking at ways that we might be able to afford more time, for instance, to our kindergarten students who are receiving currently the least amount of in-person instruction, partially due to the current half-day configuration that we have for kindergarten, which thankfully on the horizon will change. But as an administrative team, we continue to vet what it would look like to be able to bring our kindergarten students back into a full halftime, a, a, a full-time half-day, if you will, setting, which would be much closer to what they were accustomed to. And we hope to have some more information about that possibility by the time parents make declarations for the third trimester. And I should also note that, you know, this is the time of year where we start to try to do planning for next school year. So January, for instance, is the month when we start to look at our, our staffing. And currently, we're looking at, at two different ways to look at staffing. One is currently what a hybrid scenario staffing model would look like and what a staffing model would look like similar to what it was pre-pandemic. The real challenges exist right now. And, and I, I don't mean to oversimplify it, but this really does boil down to the social distance guidelines that are still in place. I, for one, am optimistic that as we move forward and as more people are vaccinated and that there is a better understanding about the relative importance of social distancing or what that spacing actually needs to look like, that some of that could change. My crystal ball is broken, I'm afraid, in terms of when that might happen. But in the event, for instance, that we were to receive notification that one of the primary mitigations in the schools would be simply to wear masks, that would be a huge development. But unless and until that can happen, we would have to find space for thousands of our children to attend school because we're just not able to do that within the confines of our school building to, again, bring back all children all day, every day. I do want to make a few comments about vaccines. And, you know, I wish I could be the one to bring great clarity to this topic. But if you watch the news and, and read the popular press, you and I are hearing much of the same thing. There is great excitement and anticipation associated with vaccine deployment. There remains significant confusion, however, over what the supply chain actually looks like and whether there exists an adequate human and space resource to accompany a, a large-scale mass vaccination. Even over the course of the past week, I've received conflicting information about the actual supply line of the vaccine. It is a primary goal for the school district to have all staff, whether they fall into a 1A or a 1B category, be vaccinated or, or make that available to staff. I want nothing more than to be able to do that. Because in part, we live in Cook County, which is the second largest county in the country. With that comes a, a supply challenge and logistical challenges that are unique simply because of the size of the population that we're, that we're dealing with. We are coordinating closely with the Cook County Department of Public Health and the North Cook Regional Office of Education in supplying them with the necessary information that they need to order a vaccine supply that's necessary and be able to create a system by which to distribute that vaccine. There is still no clear indication as to when large-scale vaccination program will be underway such that educators who fall into the, the 1B category, classroom teachers and others who work in the school building, will be able to actually sign up for an appointment to receive their first vaccine. Now, for some of you who, you know, like I said, listen to the news and, and read the paper, you may have seen some examples that, that appear to be great disparity. And quite frankly, and in my opinion, it is. The Skokie School Districts have been vaccinated. If, if they're not completely vaccinated by now, they're, they're certainly on the path toward doing so. That's largely because Skokie has its own health department, and not everyone realizes that. So it has a supply line that's different from Cook County. There are other school districts employees, employees in Lake County, for instance, where I happen to work, that have our, live rather, that have already seen vaccinations taking place sporadically across different regions of Lake County, varying across school districts. And in suburban Cook County, there's a new story that unfolds every day. And the, that, right now, there is no clear-cut rhyme or reason. I, I have advised and continue to advise staff to take advantage of an opportunity to receive the vaccine should one become available at a local Walgreens or, or a local Jewel. Because that is not an information circuit, unfortunately, that the schools are a part of. My hope is that we will be. I think that's really the only efficient and effective way to get a mass vaccination campaign underway and to have it implemented successfully. But I have been saying to, to staff, if you have an opportunity, if, if you're able to sign up for an appointment to, to do so, because until something is more concrete, that's the reality that we're dealing with. So more to come on that. The information changes every day. It sometimes changes multiple times throughout the day. But we stand ready to be able to help our staff get vaccinated. That, that also becomes a linchpin in, in our ability to get closer and closer to a pre-pandemic educational environment. There are other mitigation factors that are being evaluated, and I certainly hope change, that give us more ability to be able to do that. And that concludes my, my comments for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dane. We've heard a lot of information in your comments, so I'm just going to ask board members if they need any clarification or if they have any comments. And if not, we can move on. But I see that Katie has something she'd like to say.
So I have a couple of questions, Dr. Delli, and some, yeah, questions. Um, so it's my understanding that the guidelines say six feet apart when possible. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's what they said.
So if they say that, and we know that, for example, with our youngest learners, our youngest learners are the ones that are struggling the most when it comes to learning through Zooms. And we know that the youngest children, from all the research I've read, they are not transmitting the virus that they can find to the adults. And we also know, at least from, again, my experience and anecdotal experience from other parents, the hybrid classes, when you double them based on what they currently exist, they're nowhere close to the size that they would be in a normal year of 24, 25, 26 children. So knowing that the guidelines say six feet when possible, and knowing that we have a lot less children in a, in a given space at a given time, why can't we do three feet or four feet? Since the guidelines do say when possible, to allow those children, in particularly, to be in full-time in some capacity?
Right. So a lot of this is based on an algorithm. You, you're right, Katie. So, you know, generally speaking, we have 80% of our students attending school and 20% roughly, and someone can, from my team, can correct me if I'm wrong about that, in our goal, in our full remote model. And so, you know, if you apply the algorithm to 80% of whatever the class size would otherwise be, then you have to overlay that with the square footage that exists within the classroom. And our classrooms across the district vary in size. So even within a particular grade level at a particular school, you have variability in the size of those classrooms, which, which causes the algorithm to need to change in terms of how many students you actually can fit into a space, which then could result in, say, within, if we just use first grade as an example, or second grade as an example, within one building, some classrooms being able to support that with the six-foot distancing guideline and others not. And so that's one of the intervening variables that, that makes this so difficult. The, the standard that the Cook County Department of Public Health has applied is a six-foot standard. Up for interpretation is what is actually meant by if possible. So, you know, for instance, if, if you were able to get all but one child into a classroom with six feet, and, and the algorithm, let's say, resulted in it actually being, I don't know, five and three-quarters feet, and then you could fit every child there, that might be a conversation worth having, having. But we, we just don't have the ability to, across all classrooms, all grades, all buildings, have the ability to do that. Now, like I did mention, we are looking specifically at kindergarten because kindergarten has the lower, the, you know, the lowest class sizes of any class size in the district and typically the largest square footage to deal with. So we are really giving a close look at what 80% of that student population in the classroom would otherwise look like. And providing we can get six feet, a six-foot standard between the students, that's something that we're hoping that, that we're going to be able to pivot on. But we don't want to pivot on it if we can only do it at Westbrook, but we can't do it at Lyon or vice versa. So that's one of the things that we're trying to figure out right now.
Okay. Any other comments? Mike?
Good evening, good evening, everyone. So I've got a couple of questions for Dane and then for Dr. Delli, and then a couple of just comments I'd like to make. One, first, Dr. Delli, can you tell us, are we maximizing the number of seats filled each week in each classroom? By that, I mean, I suspect that not every class is optimized based on who went to goal versus who didn't. Are we, are we maximizing the number of what I'll call butts-in seats for in-person learning on a week-to-week basis by building?
Yeah. If I think I understand your, your question, Mike, the, the answer is yes. When we created the, the hybrid model, we, we reshuffled, if you will, or recreated class sizes such that we would have that be a consistent variable as we overlaid the size of the classrooms against how many children we would be able to put in there. So we believe we have maximized that. Now, in terms of the average daily attendance, for instance, that, you know, that, of course, is a different,
Of course.
A different story. But there, you know, there, you, you may find a situation where you might have one classroom at one grade at one building. This is just an example, that might actually have the ability to get more children in there. But it's, it's not just as simple as that. And then we have a bigger, then we have a bigger question about equity and, and things of that nature.
I'm talking more about, there's an empty seat. There's not a student assigned to that seat, not on a daily basis, but just because of the way the numbers worked out. You've got a seat. You can then move a, a child that's on an IEP or a 504 into a seat for an additional day. And then, you know, that's the kind of maximization that I'm talking about, just making sure that we don't have unused seats in classrooms where we have an opportunity to fill them.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that's the case, Matt or Brian or anyone else.
I would, yeah. I mean, and Mary can speak specifically to special ed, but I know with respect to the, let's say, butts-in seats, um, the idea is that we have been maximizing as it relates to our IEP students because many have been coming in for multiple days, as well as some of our EL learners. Um, and that has been going on throughout, um, both hybrid and somewhat during our adaptive pause as a related to our most needy students and ensuring that they have a more permanent seat in those classrooms because of their needs and the desire of the group to, to help them out.
Thank you, Brian. That answers my question. Dr. Delli, do you know, are there any? Thank you, Brian. That answers my question. Dr. Dilly, do you know, are there any like sized districts? And that can be plus or minus a thousand of our size that are, are doing a full in-person experience right now?
Elementary or high school?
Oh, that's what I meant, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Elementary is what I intended.
Elementary. Yes, we have, we have a neighbor, District thirty one, West Northfield, who I believe brings in every child each day.
But they're not like size. I'm talking about like size, plus or minus a thousand of our size.
Okay. You know, not in the, not in the immediate area. I believe that Arlington Heights just began a model whereby any child who was interested in coming in each day, every day, all day, would be able to do that. I also believe that their class sizes are quite a bit lower than ours. And I think the percentage of students who opted for in-person is a lower percentage than what, than what we have here. But that's one district that, that comes to mind, and I believe they just started doing that.
They just, they just started on, I live in Arlington Heights. So they just started on Thursday. And it has been met with different levels of enthusiasm or frustration. The, I will tell you that the older you get, even in this district in Arlington Heights, the more complications that have come up. They did have a situation at the middle school with one close contact causing a need for twelve kids to be out after day one. Because if you're under the six feet, the close contact issue becomes more prominent, especially at the middle school level. And I'm only speaking to the most recent. It happened on Thursday, was their first day. On Friday, they had WGN at their back door talking about how many kids had to miss school. But at the younger grades, I have, go ahead, Dane.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I was just going to add that I, I believe Will Matt is doing something similar at K three, excuse me. My understanding also is that they have it, they have a way to space it at six feet.
Okay. District thirty is sending out letters to staff, letting, I guess, to teachers and to substitutes, saying, hey, you're, you're in the one B category. Please go sign up as quickly as you can. Are we facilitating the same sort of engagement with our teachers? Or can they just go in with an ID card? Do you know how, how the one B categorization is being handled for our staff?
Yeah, so we, we have shared, and Kathy, you can, you can speak to this. We, you know, our, our mode of operation right now is to share information as we get information. So for instance, if we, if we learn about, you know, specific sites that are being opened or made available, we share links and within the link, though, sometimes the link is nothing more than registering. And then it says, and then if we happen to get a vaccine, we'll be in touch.
Right.
And then in other cases, we're hearing situations where if you're able to, if your timing's great and you thread the needle, you, you can actually open a link that gets you on a, a day and a time for an appointment.
Right, right.
Kathy, anything you want to add to that?
No, that's exactly right. We are working really hard to get as much information as we can and share it out until we can establish some sort of coordinated effort. But right now, we're just trying to get things out and we're working with a parent, a former parent in the district who's a doctor, who has put together some great resources. And she's been working with us to try to figure out the best way to, you know, get the information out and, and maybe move it along for our staff.
But my sense is we're not physically putting a letter in our staff members, our teachers' hands that says, hey, I'm a teacher at District thirty four. I'm category one B. Please add me to your list.
You don't, you don't need it. All you need is your ID.
And some of our staff members were in one A, some of our health staff members and have been able to receive the first dose of the vaccine. So it's slow, but.
Mike, I, I'm sorry, Mary.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you, you're hitting on part of the problem, in my opinion, which is, it, there's a systematic component to this where I'm not sure where the validation comes in, quite frankly.
And, and part of the reason why, just for everyone who's on this call, we have a hundred and five attendees. I think these are important questions for them to hear that we are asking.
Absolutely.
I think there's a misperception that we're sitting here not having these discussions. And I want the greater community to know that that is just a false narrative. I have spoken to every one of our board members, save one in the last week, about these topics very intentionally and thoughtfully. And I, you know, as most of the board knows, I read a lot of social media and there's a lot of vitriol and angst out there that we are beholden to teachers or we're beholden to the superintendent or we're beholden to Steve Ruelle or to someone else. And it's really important to know that we're all struggling here to get the best information that we possibly can. I've got one more question for you, Dr. Dolly, and then I want to talk a little bit about phase four. Will we have the ability to track, keeping in mind HIPAA, when our teachers get vaccinated?
Yes, we, we will have the ability. And I, I would also say that right now, we are strongly encouraging all staff members who, you know, unless they have a specific health condition that would make a decision like that, not a good decision, to be vaccinated. It's, at this moment, not a legal requirement. I see that coming. Right now, we're, and I think most people agree that it's a good idea to do this. People are just frustrated because there, there, there's just not the conduit to make it happen.
So my last comment will be this. We, we've gone from tier three to two to one in some sort of record speed in the last week, which seems somewhat remarkable to me. But it also says clearly on the coronavirus response website for the state of Illinois that if we go into phase four, that P twelve schools, higher ed, all summer programs and childcare can be open with IDPH approved safety guidance. I think all of us, I feel, I feel, well, I'll just speak for myself. I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board. I, myself, if we get to phase four, I want our buildings open as thoughtfully and as quickly as they possibly can be, such that we take full advantage of the rest of this school year and get a running start into next school year. And I hope that we can work towards that goal. And I will stop right there.
All right. I'm gonna, Scott, I see that you have something to say and I'll let you get to that in a moment. I just want to be thoughtful about where this discussion is going. This is all reaction to Dane's comments. I think Dr. Dolly's done a great job answering, but let's be aware that, you know, this is coming out of the blue. Dr. Date, Dr. Dolly does not know that we were going to come with a whole bunch of questions based on his comments tonight. So just be respectful of that, that we might not have all the answers right now at our fingertips. But as Mr. Corman stated, it is important for everybody to know that we are having these discussions behind the scenes. I don't want to cut off anybody or cut off discussion, but let's be sensitive to the rest of our agenda and also what the expectations for tonight are. So Scott, on that note.
Yeah, so I just want to point out, we were in phase four before, in, in a hybrid situation. So the one thing that needs to change when we get to phase four is guidance from the Illinois Department of Public Health or the Cook County Department of Public Health. And that is something that our parents can take care of by calling Cook County Department of Public Health or the Illinois Department of Public Health or their legislators to make sure the governor makes these decisions. Because when we get the guidance that we can change mitigation levels, that is when the schools can be open safely. And so we have an audience here tonight that really is very vocal, I'm sure. Those are the people that can help us make this decision quicker. That's all I wanted to point out.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Anything else anybody would like to add before we move on? I thank everybody for your questions, comments. Again, these are important discussions. Some of this takes some, some planning and some other further discussions, which we will continue to have. And we will definitely keep everybody posted. Again, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Dolly. But at this time, I'd like to move on to audience comments. This is the first of two opportunities for anyone who wishes to address the board to submit comments using a link found on our website. When submitting a comment, please identify yourself and your connection to the district. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes at length, in length. Kathy Kajigian will read your comments, but please note, the board will be in listening mode only. We'll be taking notes, but we will not be responding tonight. But you will be, all comments will get an appropriate response in a timely manner. And we ask that you submit one comment per, per comment section. So on that note, Kathy, are there any comments at this time?
Yes, we do have eleven or twelve comments. So I will start with, from Mary Co., parent of current District thirty four students. I'm assuming at this point that between the IDPH guidelines, space issues and teachers' union, we, we will be hybrid for the rest of the school year. Is this a correct assumption? Please let the families of D thirty four know if you are working toward anything outside of maintaining hybrid. Have we started planning for fall twenty twenty one? If the guidelines do not change for fall of twenty twenty one, what are we doing currently to facilitate full day in-person school? Are there plans in place to utilize other infrastructures? What are we doing currently to help ensure we go back to school full in person for fall of twenty twenty one? One of the biggest frustrations I felt parents had last year was that lack of planning in order to open schools for in-person learning for August. We delayed in-person learning by six weeks because we were not ready. COVID nineteen has been here for almost a year and we know the hurdles. What can the community and parents do to help facilitate full day in-person learning? Specific barriers should not be a secret. I think we need to know as a community to help facilitate in-person learning. Please let us know specific barriers we are not able to overcome and the plans that are being discussed to open full day for fall twenty twenty one. Lastly, will, will there be more board votes to make these decisions? Or will decisions to open hybrid versus full in person be done behind closed doors? Appreciate your open communication. And then next, we have Gillian Matthews, parent of current D thirty four students. It is obvious our district staff has done an incredible job of keeping our students safe, and for that I thank you. Specifically, my children's two teachers, Sarah Richards and Emily Brigette, have gone above and beyond to ensure our kids are academically engaged and emotionally supported. We are beyond grateful to your, to you both. Thank you. In an attempt to understand the district's plans to get our children back to the classroom safely and efficiently, I have a few questions. In general, what is the plan to reopen schools full time? Is there any tentative timeline draft or measurements being used to guide decisions or steps toward reopening? Given the very limited supply of COVID vaccines and the increasing frustration to secure appointments, does D thirty four have a plan to help teachers and staff secure vaccinations for themselves like other nearby districts have been able to do? On that note, will vaccines be required for staff to return to the building? If a teacher chooses not to get a vaccine and/or still feels unsafe returning to the classroom, how will that be addressed? Finally, there are so many parents and community members who desperately want to help and seem to be unsure about how to go about impacting change. Many want to offer their time and resources to helping our district achieve this daunting task of reopening our schools. If you could offer specific ways that the community could tangibly help, I know it would be appreciated by so many. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Next is Amy McElroy, parent of current D thirty four students. Is full day school being considered for this year? How much notice will families be given if school goes from hybrid to full time? Liz Lapp, parent of current D thirty four students, I have two questions. One, what is the district's plan to vaccinate the teachers and other staff? I've heard some districts are partnering with the high schools to have vaccination events. Two, what is the district's plan for having kids go back full time? Will Matt is back full time? What are the metrics, decisions and logistics that need to be made in order to make this happen for Grandview? I think parents would like to know what the district's ultimate goal is over the next several months. Christine Lake, parent of current D thirty four students. Good evening, District thirty four, Board of Education and Administration and staff. I want to express a monumental thank you for all the efforts that have taken place to get our children back to school, even for partial days. I have witnessed unwavering, top-notch efforts by our teachers to not only teach the content, but also have the kids connect socially. And for that, they have my admiration, appreciation and gratitude. These tremendous teachers are our community's frontline workers, and I would like to know what measures have been, have taken place to ensure our school staff is vaccinated as quickly as possible. My hope is we are working and researching tirelessly to partner with not only our Cook County Health Department, but local medical and community resources to ensure it is our top priority. I know surrounding districts are doing a lot of legwork to ensure this happens, some as early as round one this week, and my hope is we are too. Thank you for recognizing their hard work and dedication as we value the health and safety of our essential workers. From Jill Griffin, parent of current D thirty four students. It is hard to understand why neighboring elementary schools and districts have in-person options every day with almost complete hours. For example, Will Matt Elementary Schools are in school from eight thirty to two fifteen PM. If neighboring districts can do it, why are we limiting our in-person hours and days per week so significantly? What are the plans to expand the in-person option now the restrictions on dining, et cetera, are being lifted? Kelly Quinn, parent of current D thirty four students. Is any consideration being given to skipping spring break and ending the school year a week earlier like most universities and colleges? Or at a minimum, scaling back the quarantine requirement to ten days, similar to other school districts, such as our neighbors in Northfield? Northfield only requires a ten day quarantine from Christmas break travel, and I'm not aware of any COVID spread as a result, and both are within CDC recommendation. Thank you. From Drew Van Harten, parent of current D thirty four students. Glad we have returned to hybrid. Please explain the path for D thirty four to return full time in school learning and how us parents can help facilitate and be part of the solution. Thank you. From William Chapman, parent of current D thirty four students. If Region ten moves to Tier four of Restore Illinois, will students be able to return to school in full? If not, what are the metrics required for a full return to classroom? From Brian Murphy, parent of current D thirty four students. At Hanking in one kindergarten class, there are nine students in the morning class on Monday and Thursday, and nine students in the morning class on Tuesday and Friday. Yet there are only three students in the afternoon class on Monday, Thursday, and only five students in the afternoon class on Tuesday, Friday. Why have you not asked if anyone wants to switch their child to the afternoon so that they can receive more individualized attention? Why can you not accommodate all kindergarteners every day for a half day based on these numbers? From Bonnie Kearns, citizen with no children in District thirty four. Children are not dying from COVID. Children are not passing the disease to adults. So the only question is, why are we even having this meeting tonight? We're meeting because adults are afraid. You may want to keep the kids home to protect them from the world, but let's be clear, when you do that, you are not really protecting the children. You are only attempting to manage your own anxiety, and you do that at their expense. The group responsible for not returning kids full time in person to school are acting as negligent officials. You are harming the children. You are failing them. You must agree to make decisions in the best interests of the children. If you do not, if paralyzed by fear, you are continuing to act purely out of self-interest. You will ensure an entire generation of traumatized children academically behind for many years to come. By the way, several Catholic schools a few blocks away from D thirty four schools, which have been in person full time the entire year, as have districts next door, full time in person. You're telling me you have no idea how to make the six foot roll when possible work. You don't have space. You have the Park District facilities at your disposal. Use those buildings. Show us the floor plans of the schools. Dr. Dolly, how many more families have to suffer because you can't seem to dissect your? Dr. Delly, how many more families have to suffer because you can't seem to dissect your algorithm, which is a the most nonsensical talking point I've heard to date and appears to be the only talking point you care about? Get a tape measure and a pencil. That's the only algorithm you need to save these kids from the damage already caused. From Lisa Schlechter, parent of current District 34 students. Thank you, D34, for all your help this year. For the remainder of the year, since it's likely we will be in hybrid, can you open up Wednesdays as well for on-campus learning? And that is the end of comments for this period.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Thanks to those who submitted comments. The next item on our agenda is consideration of resolutions, also known as our consent agenda. These are items that are either routine in nature or that have already been discussed previously by the board. Tonight, we have six items on consent. The 2142 Personnel Report, 2143 Approval of Payroll Warrants, 2144 Approval of Vendor Warrants, 2145 Year 2021-2022 Transportation and Building Usage Fees. 2146 Resolution Authorizing a Supplemental Tax Levy to Pay the Principal of an Interest on Outstanding Limited Bonds of the District. And 2147, the 2021-22 School Calendar. May I have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Scott Nelson.
Second, Jim Baumstark.
This is a roll call vote. I ask our Board Recording Secretary Katie Siegel for a roll call vote. Corman.
Hi.
Peggy.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Stefani.
Hi.
Hector Witz.
Hi.
Tom Stark.
Hi.
And Jones.
Hi.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is consideration of other resolutions. First up tonight is Resolution 2148. The Resolution to Establish a Fiscal Year and Authorize Development of the 2022 Budget. And I believe Eric, you might be able to shed some light on that for us?
Yeah, real quick, this is just something that's annually presented to the board. It sort of lays out by month what the budget development process looks like. And even though we just got done with last year's, this is, this is the right time following tonight's presentation of the projection to get going and earn us down the FY22 budget.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Does anybody have any questions? If not, this is a roll call vote. Katie Siegel, may I have a roll? Mr. Jones? Ms. Jones? Peggy?
Hi.
Tom Stark?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Stefani?
Hi.
Hector Witz?
Hi.
And Corman?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 2149, the RIF Renewal. We need, and actually before I say anything, I'm going to ask Dr. Hopkins if she has anything she would like to add at this time?
No, we've just asked the board to eliminate the TOA middle school position. But to replace it with a student success coordinator as we have done at the TIA middle school. And it allows greater focus on social, emotional learning as well as the other TOA responsibilities. The RIF is to ensure that the teacher who's currently in the role of TOA at Springman will be placed in another position for which she's qualified for the 2122 school year.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2149, RIF Renewal. We need the motion to adopt the resolution to reduce and force Anastasia Midas and reassign her to full-time teaching for the 2122 school year as discussed. Don't move.
Second, John Haggie.
Thank you for that. Katie Siegel may have a roll call vote. Tom Stark?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Peggy?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Stefani?
Hi.
Hector Witz?
Hi.
Corman?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to our discussion portion of tonight's agenda. And we start off with the five-year financial projections from CFAC. And before we begin, I just want to thank once again the members of CFAC. They are such a valuable asset to our community. They serve as an advisory committee to Dr. Delly. And then they share their, their findings with us as well. And they're a hard-working group of people. We really appreciate everything we do, everything you do. And I believe tonight we have with us Mr. Steve Toomey, who will be presenting. So welcome, Mr. Toomey.
Well, why, thank you, Ms. Natalie. Much appreciated. Let me just play with my screens here a second. Are you seeing a proper frame of a regular old slide there?
Uh, we're sort of seeing a split side, split-side slide.
That is not what we want. Had it right the first time. Okay, let's do this again. That.
While you're getting that set up, I also want to welcome another member of your committee, Mr. Richard Kreuzfeldt. So thank you for joining us as well, Richard. I know you're here too. Helping Mr. Toomey.
Okay.
If I shared the PDF and you kept the slides on your own, let me know.
No, is that, is that better that way? It just, it just takes me 10 or 12 efforts and we'll get there eventually. So thank you all so much. Thank you, Beth and Julie and Zach for your uplifting presentations and your powerful work. That's terrific. Thank you, Dr. Delly, for warming up my audience with such a clear and upbeat message about such a straightforward subject. Seriously, though, you guys have taken on some Herculean efforts and your team have done some amazing work for our community. So thanks for all that. So thanks for your time today, folks. The purpose of CFAC's annual pilgrimage before you is really pretty simple, pretty unsurprising and maybe even boring sometimes. But we just want to share with you, the public and the board generally, and by charter with the superintendent specifically, kind of the perspectives of CFAC for your consideration regarding the fiscal operating state of District 34. And to be honest, I suspect that some eyes may glaze over as we talk about the numbers. And I recognize that this may not be the most eagerly anticipated update in the world. And frankly, the message is usually pretty upbeat. We typically share that we'll be about breakeven or, you know, maybe we'll be at a slight deficit. But we believe that Eric and Dr. Delly will put some manager, pull some managerial rabbits out of hats. And set us on the right path. But unfortunately, that's not really our message tonight. This time, our message is kind of the following. Our operating conditions are unsustainable in the medium term and must be addressed in the short term. So not a message we typically deliver, but it's one that we're, has kind of evolved as we've looked out over the next five years. Now, you know, some of the 105 people in the audience may be thinking, wahoo, we passed the referendum. All must be good. This Toomey guy must be nuts. Or even cool, given the interest rates today, our fiscal outcomes are going to be even better than we thought. But just to be clear, those are capital funds and they are not the funds we're talking about. What we'll discuss here are the funds in the operating budget. So the punchline is, as 2026 came into view and we get past all the noise in the forecasting process and in the system, we begin to see some kind of alarming clarity on the numbers. And tonight, as a representative of CFAC, I'll share what we've come to call a structural operational deficit. And this may be a little bit confusing, but that's what I'll talk about here today, if that's fine. This slide is the blah, blah, blah slide that some people like to see. I am not big fan, not real fond of them. Rather just say, we have 13 members on CFAC, just as a reminder. Most of us are community members, some are administrators and some are relevant stakeholders. And my name is Steve Toomey, a community member. And also joining, as per Natalie stated, was Richard Chrisbell. And so this group here spends a lot of times looking at the numbers, trying to whittle through the noise and get to a place of truth. And hopefully you appreciate this presentation. If you do, by all means, Richard and I'd be happy to take the accolades. But if you don't like it, Scott Nelson's also on the board. Please direct alternate comments to him. All right. So in terms of the CFAC charge, just to bring you back to basics here, most of you may know this. But our charge is to give a financial forecast, a five-year rolling one, to the superintendent. That's actually, that verbiage is different than you may have seen last year or in prior presentations where it said to the board. But the superintendent works for the board and that is, that is our charge. So my safe harbor statement is that this is a forecast, right? This is, it can be impacted by all kinds of things. And it's a projection, not a prediction, but we really think it is a call to action and we hope you take it as such. So again, I mentioned earlier that the scope of this is really just to talk about kind of our operating funds, not the other types of funds we have, our capital or debt service or our health and safety funds. So the key themes that I just want to share with you are really three. There is an awful lot of volatility in the numbers in the last, in the next coming years due to a number of circumstances. And we've also committed that we would actually draw down some of our operational funds for the capital program. So one trade-off of our ambitious fund plans is that our fund balance is going to shrink. And that, combined with a number of other things, is going to lead us to a place where we may get to an operating fund balance that is at a fairly low level. And that's what we're trying to raise as a, you know, a little bit of an alarm tonight is that if things continue as they are today, then we could find ourselves in trouble five, six years out. So that's where I'm going to take this conversation here with the key themes. And I know there's not much interactivity here on these Zooms, so I'll just keep on rolling and you guys can stop me. We'll have some Q and A at the end. Just to look backwards, just, you know, what's changed in this since January of 2020? So a year ago, I think Alex sat in front of you and shared some results. And the punchline here is not too bad. We actually ended up kind of, we end up pretty close to where we thought we would. That's a big tribute to Eric and his, and Dr. Delly and their managerial skills. But what I will share with you is when we started looking at the financial flows and we see, you know, what's, what's our schedule, what's our projection around fiscal surplus and deficits? It looks like this. And trust me, if I see a client whose cash flows look like this, I get a little nervous. And sure enough, I encourage us to spin a cycle and say, okay, the board's, this is going to be a little confusing for people. Can we break it down, slow it down so people can kind of see what's going on here? But the problem is that we've got four or five or six things happening in every single period. And these are projections. So no matter how hard we try, we look at the different years and we can talk about what we think may or may not happen. We can have, we can take a look at any of these years around what's going on with COVID, what's going on with full-day kindergarten, operating expenses, et cetera. And you keep on going out and, you know, we've got the TIF expiring coming in 2024. So there's a lot of stuff. So my whole point here is just this. If you look at kind of the normalized years, you get 2020, 25 and 26. Those are kind of the more normalized years that we see in front of us. And what you can see about the slope of this non-threatening purple line as opposed to a bright red line is that the deficits are growing. And this is, you know, this is, this year was the first year where we actually had more expenditures than we did revenues than for quite some time. And if you're looking at that as it becomes a little bit scary as we continue looking out in the more normalized years where that almost becomes a little bit of a habit. Now, for those of you that get annoyed with my, the pace of my bills and your inability to read those, this is really a summary of what they are. And again, just to summarize and give you the punchline, is that there are a whole bunch of things that are either non-recurring. And those are on the left-hand side. And then there's some things that are recurring projections that are happening on the right-hand side. Now, if you look at this summary, the right-hand side highlights the crux of the matter. Revenues are climbing by about 1.5%. Costs by double or triple of that, you know, even our third graders can tell you that, that, that math doesn't work very well. Now, for those of you that do want to have a drill down on some of those items that we highlighted in there, the there will be, the slides will be posted in a format that will allow you to see each of those builds later tonight. But if we zoom out to 2025, what you'll see is that the structural deficit we are afraid is going to occur about that point in time where it will grow. It will, sorry, it gets, it starts at a fairly small level in that kind of 2025. But it gets out there to the kind of fiscal 26, starts getting to 1.6 million. And then from there on, it just keeps on accelerating. And if you look at that, it's a scenario that is not sustainable for us. And in particular, when we look at our fund balance, some people are visual learners, which I am. And this paints a picture that we think provides more clarity to you, the board, and to Dr. Delly around what is going to happen, what do we project to happen to our fund balance? And so given, you know, we've got the fancy charts on the bottom to give you the specific numbers. And we have a non-threatening salmon color as opposed to bright red on the bottom of the chart above. But what it shows you is that by fiscal year 2026, our fund balance goes to about four months' cash supply on hand. And that becomes dangerously low. And now by policy, there's a policy mysteriously called the 420 policy. And I think, again, my friend, Mr. Nelson, may say, oh, tee hee. But this is a serious presentation, so we're not going to show any bills like that. But the punchline is the same. The conclusion is that we've got a lot of volatility in our projections going through this five-year period. At the end of the five-year period, despite all that noise, it's likely that we're going to have a deficit that's going to be problematic. And we also think that there is going to be there's going to be a tendency to say, hey, we're going to get distracted by some of the short-term pluses and minuses in the surplus. But if we don't begin to be thoughtful about it very quickly, we fear that we are going to get to a dangerously low level in our operational fund balance by 2025 and '6. And, you know, again, just coming back to that little purple circle I highlighted, for the first time many years, we spent more than we took in. And as I said, any of our kindergartners or two third graders could tell us that this is foreshadowing potentially a larger problem that could be, that we think should be mitigated in 2026. So that is the, that's the bulk of this presentation. If there are any questions, we'd like to, we'd like to hear them.
All right, board members, hang on for a second. I can't see all of you at the moment. Um.
Let's stop my chair.
Oh, there we go. Did I see your hand up, Jim?
Uh, yeah. May I unmute? Yes. I don't know if this is, is part of that presentation, but, but, I mean, 1.6 million, even though it's, it's, it's a pretty small percentage of like the total expenditures, which tells me that there's probably a lot of volatility or in the potential outcome there. Like basically that small changes in those assumptions could dramatically change that 1.6 to positive or negative. I'm just wondering, is that something you
Yeah, so.
Do you sensitivity test some of those assumptions? Because I feel like it's really sensitive.
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying. Let me just take a stab at it and then I'll turn it to Eric. So Jim, what we hope is different in the messaging this time is that, you know, I was kind of a little tongue-in-cheek by what the messages have been in the past around, hey, we're going to maybe have a slight deficit, but we'll be able to pull rabbits out of hats to make it work. What is different this time is when we clear the decks of all the, do I think that managerially we'll be able to manage that? Sure. Does that change the story? No. So if you just look at our, you know, we, we have done some things to keep up competitively with salaries and benefits and things along those lines. Those are some of our biggest costs, obviously, right? And so structurally, what we're concerned about is our revenue number is at one pace and our cost number are at a different pace. Fundamental problem. And so that's, I'll turn it over to Eric, but that's what we're really seeing here, Jim, that that's the key message I want you guys to hear, that we need to be thoughtful about that.
Well, actually, a follow-up question on that. Is, is that any different than what it's been like in the last 15 years? I feel like that's always the problem. Like, isn't that, isn't that what the conditions we've lived in?
I think we're done with.
So wait, so hence the term structural. We're talking about, there's been a structural deficit for the last 20 years that we haven't really addressed. And that really comes down to when Mike was talking before about our capital expenditure in the beginning was born because we didn't fund the teachers when we built the TIA. So that is the structure. So that is the structural deficit that we are finally coming to. We've kicked the can and now it's our turn to fill the can with money somehow.
Okay.
Yep. The only thing I'd add is that, you know, five years ago before, when, when I, you know, first came to the district, the TIF wasn't even a part of the five-year look. And then as time came on, we sort of realized that unfortunately, we're in a pandemic. We're, we're making estimates about what the EAV is going to be two years from now, given the county, you know. But what I think you're seeing now is a trend line emerge between two years at the, in the outer part of this five-year. And that's something this, this board hasn't seen yet coming off of the TIF. What's the trend line? And so I think Jim, more so less than the 1.6, it's the trend that it's going from, you know, 800,000 to 1.6. And what I, I, I often do in my office, but I'd never showed anyone is how does that trend keep going? Because as you know, every year that keeps going, it's, it's less probably accurate, but it's the trend line that's scary that's emerging after the TIF comes off.
This is Richard. Could I chime in with a couple of comments?
Please do.
Yes, Jim, I think you've raised an excellent point and you're, you're totally right that, that there are a set of projections here. And if we were to tweak these even just a little bit, these results would look very different. But what I would tell all the group here is that the CFAC group tries to strike a middle range on every one of the estimates or assumptions that we make. We're not trying to tip toward an aggressive side or a conservative side. We're trying to hit the middle on this. So, and, and this is the way it's come out. So I'll, I'll point that out, but, but of course, had we, you know, shifted in an aggressive direction, these results would change dramatically or a conservative direction, they'd shift the other way. The other thing I would mention is what's changed? And when we were making this presentation a year ago, I think we were showing a balance at the end of the period or maybe even a positive number. And now we're showing a negative number. I'll, I'll point out one factor that is a big part of that. Last year, we were estimating inflation at 2% through this entire five-year period. And that pulls the property tax revenue up by 2% a year. This year, we're estimating it at 1.5% based on what inflation has in fact been running. So if you take a half percent off each year for five years, that's going to take a big number off, off the top right there. So that might be the single largest driver of the difference.
But isn't CPI an element of the teacher raises too?
Not anymore. That, it was last, last contract. And so that, that, that's also a shift is that the teachers' salaries, the salary schedules are right-sized this last quarter.
Right. But I think going forward though, they're still linked. I, I know there was a one-time right size, but.
So, so now, what it used to be was salary increases were solely based on CPI. Now it's a lane, it's a step base, two-part increase. One of them is based on CPI.
CPI is still a piece of it though. If CPI goes down, salary does go down.
The step is, is, is way more valuable than the base increase that's tied to CPI.
Plus decoupling is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And Scott, I see you doing sign language over there. Is there something you wanted to say? Oh, okay. Um, Mike, your hand was up.
I think John was ahead of me and I'm happy to defer to John, but, okay. So I noticed on the, one of the slides, you had this, I think it was eight million, six million and seven million for the contribution in the later years, which that's 21, yeah?
Hold on, Mike. I'll see if I can get back to you.
My point being, the number that's been rattling around in my head for the capital contribution is 20 million, not 21 million. So I'd like to just get clarification on that.
So we also, as a part of the, the promise, we, we, we asked Steve Ruelle to save up 150,000 each year over the entire life of this project to come up with another 1.2 million, 1.5 million it was. Yeah. So just another chunk.
Okay, thank you. I, I would love to figure out a way to navigate, maybe this is a future consideration for CFAC is, let's suppose we didn't need to make such a capital contribution or we sought to adjust the capital contribution at some point down the road. What kind of levers do we have to turn on and turn off for that money in our savings account essentially? That could help us to, to get to a better financial position. And I'll leave it at there. I, I don't want to, I don't think any of us have the view that says, hey, we got $21 million, we're going to spend all of it. Now, maybe we have to. But I would certainly think we would all like to spend less of our, of our savings account if it's possible to do so. And whether that, whether that savings would be material to the out years.
Sure. Um, Scott, you wanted to talk.
So, uh, Mike, that will help us as far as our fund balance goes. And when we run a deficit, it will take, won't, we won't look as bad going forward, but that doesn't address our structural issues. I mean, we really only control at this point our expenses. There's a way to control your revenue going forward. That's another discussion to be had in a big, deeper discussion that the community would have to be involved in.
Yeah, no, of course.
Don't control that lever. So there's two levers and we only control one side right now.
Does, does this, is, is the CFAC giving us recommendations or are they just giving us information?
Uh, today, yeah. Today is information.
Thank you.
Eric, I saw some proverbial tension. Were you going to elaborate?
No, I was just going to say, this is just an outcome based on a set of assumptions that CFAC even settled on. So it's, it's based on those assumptions. Here's the outcome, but we're, we're guessing on the assumptions as well.
Right. But it points out the fact that we need to have further discussions and look for ways to address the structural deficit. Because if we just let this go without, without doing something, that could leave us in a very bad place going forward. I don't think any of us want to be in a situation where we only have four months of fund balance in the bank. Fun, uh, four months of operating costs and fund balance. So, uh, you know, this has given us a lot to think about and we're going to have to keep exploring what to do with the information that you guys have given us. And we might come back and ask you to do some more planning out of scenarios for us. Before we move, uh, John, forgot, want to make sure we get back to you.
Oh, I appreciate that. Yeah. So yeah, just thank you to CFAC. This is a wonderful report. Well, not such wonderful news, but it's a wonderful report. Uh, and it really does highlight the structural deficit that we're in. And that, and as Scott was, you know, mentioned that we've been in for 10 years. That's how we ended up with this referendum. We haven't, you know, but as a aside, the 6% increase in benefit cost that was estimated. I mean, that's, that's troubling. That's a big number. Is that specific to us or is that just kind of a good industry rule of thumb?
So actually we've trended higher than that, but that is the contractual cap that was set in terms of board exposure. So that's really where that's coming from is it's a look at the future in terms of how much the board can expect. And it, it could certainly be less, but if the actual rates are higher, the board's contribution increases is capped at that six and a half.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, I want to, once again, thank you gentlemen for joining us. You'll be hearing from us again soon. So thank you and watch out for that snow tonight. Free to leave if you would like, but.
Thank you all, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen, it was a great presentation. We take your, your expertise under serious advisement. We appreciate all the time that you, you give to this and, and to your community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, our next item for discussion is phase one of the 2021 construction. Speaking of our referendum and our construction plans, and I believe Eric, you're going to start us off.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Nellie. Um, it's Steve.
Oh, hi, Steve. I guess I threw it to the wrong person. We have. He's going to start us off. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, I'm going to introduce Dave Torres, uh, project manager from Nicholas and Associates. Most of you guys have already met him and he's going to present a calendar timeline for, uh, phase one of our construction project. Dave?
All right. Thanks, Dave. Thanks for joining us.
Problem. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate everyone's time this evening and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Can everyone see it? Great. Okay. Well, as Steve said, I'd like to really just kind of run us through three things tonight. I want to spend a little bit of time going through our last estimate, give you a budget update for what we're looking at at phase one, as well as provide you with an outlook on our bidding timeline. And then just conclude with an overall recap of our just construction schedule, which would be the entire referendum effort. So we'll start here with the budget update. Again, we're going to have some familiar information here. Based on our discussion last time that I presented back in November, we reviewed the 100% DD or the 100% design development stage of the design. And as I kind of walked through those steps, I mean, we started with schematic design, then moved on to design development and now we're in the 95% construction documents. But I just want to be clear that that is solely focused on this first phase. So the project itself has 30-plus different segments of work, if you will, but we're going to forsake of not confusing everyone, kind of limit it to just phase one being this first bidding phase. So I'll spend some time kind of going through what is included in that scope here in, in upcoming slides. But, uh, you know, as far as this, this last round of estimation goes, the process was the same as we, as we completed for these last several rounds. We did utilize our third-party estimating firm Concord to help with some of the takeoff and just the information gathering, the data, got a lot of great feedback from contractors. We're able to, to pull that all together to come up with these numbers that I'm going to present this evening. So phase one, just to briefly recap, includes work at Hanking, Lyons, Springman and Westbrook. And this includes the additions and associated site work. We did identify a series of deductive alternates that we're still tracking as just kind of some valves, depending on where things come at, come in at on bid day. So you'll see that here on this next slide. All right. So here is just a look at this first phase and what we're, what we've estimated here based on work at Springman, Westbrook, Lyon and Hanking. The total of 70,105,834 dollars is, is based off of the total project. So this last time I presented, one of the last slides, you saw a number of about 53 million. Now that was indicative of really just calendar year 21. But this is, this is the whole first project cost. So, um, you know, this is the spring start of construction in 2021 through completion in August of 2022. All right. For this round, just an explanation of what's all inclusive in those numbers. We are still maintaining a design contingency of about 1.5%. So that was a little bit higher on this last estimate, but we're, we have more information now, so there's less, less guessing. And we're able to put harder numbers on things so that design contingency still is reduced. It's not eliminated because we still have about five, 5% of, of design that's left from when we started the estimate. Our construction contingency, we're maintaining 5%. All of our fees, general conditions, estimated reimbursables are included. I got an escalation rate of about 1.5% included in there. Allowances for abatement, furniture, casework, technology, moisture mitigation, unsuitable soils. I have included placeholders allowances for design fees. That's all the architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing consultants, civil commissioning and called inspections. Again, I have noted here as my one big disclaimer that our numbers are based off of this 95%, which does not at this time include any of the village or NWRD review comments. So we are in the process of, uh, we, we've gotten everything from the civil side, submitted to the village for this first round of construction. We did get our first set of comments back from the village. So I know the, the civil team is working hard on getting the response in. But that is really part of the critical path here because we can't start construction unless we have our permitting and paperwork in order. So I'll get into that a little bit more, but just wanted to make sure that that was clear as, as part of this presentation. All right. So phase one, as I explained, it's, it's simple as it relates to really just the additions, the site work at Hanking, Lyon and Springman. Again, that timeline, we're, we're, we've always been shooting for a start in April. But again, that's going to be contingent on our status with permitting. And then at Westbrook, it gets a little more complicated. We actually had to break it up into a few different sequences just because we're really going to be getting most of all the site work done by August of, of 22. So there'll be a little bit of overlap there with some of phase two. But really Westbrook is the only site where, where you're going to see a significant level, level of overlap. But basically at Westbrook specifically, we're going to be starting at, on the east side on those additions. And then as we roll into the summer of 21, we'll be working on that south side, getting the site work done there, the parking lot, as well as completing the west side administration parking area so that as we move into phase two, when we're working on the north side there, the administration will still be able to, to access the building. And then finally, fade, sequence three, we're, we're going to be completing the north side site work as well as that west parking lot. So that is.
One of the reasons why we have three sequences there as far as paving goes, we wanted to make sure we left access to Levu baseball to use the remaining fields so that they'd always have an area to park and get back to the field. So we had to split it up in three different areas.
Correct. Thanks, Steve. All right. I'll move on to our bidding phase. So excited to announce that we are shooting to be out to bid actually next week. So we've got about a, a three-week bidding phase that is going to be in process here over the next few weeks. So really February will be focused on finalizing documents, getting everything issued for bid. We'll have a, a pre-bid meeting and ultimately looking to receive bids on February 25th. And following the bid opening, we've got about a week of scope reviews and an internal review with the administration to kind of go through the numbers. And then, uh, you know, our goal is to present a recommendation to the board on the March 15th board meeting. Uh, and then again, pending permit approvals, looking to start in April or as soon as we're able to get those approvals from the village, from the MWRD and all the other authorities having jurisdiction. The ROE, if I didn't say that. But that's the plan for bidding. And then I'll move on here. We've already talked through phase one. But just to conclude here and wrap up from a big picture standpoint, phase two through six is really going to be focused summer work. So these are starting in phase two, going to be the large-scale interior renovations for the first half of the buildings. Um, and then running concurrently, Springman, as we've always discussed, kind of is a separate animal. But we're really going to be breaking that down into each phase by itself. Each running about two floors at a time, just to kind of keep things isolated. And so the plan is to continue moving forward with these, these first two large-scale renovations in 22 and 23, and these are going to be, uh, these are, these are critical path. And these are going to be, these are, these are critical path projects that are really going to allow students to be into those classrooms. This is all the classroom improvements, the sprinkler improvements, everything that is really going to make that space better. And we're able to expedite that timeline towards the beginning parts of of the project timeline. We had these two phases between 22, Phase Two and Phase Three, that is, broke out between year 22 and year 25, but we made some design tweaks, integrated sprinkler work at each of the buildings. And that allowed us to kind of consolidate those two large sets of renovation projects. So now we're able to do them back to back, which will be real nice. So that'll be Phase Two and Phase Three, summers of 22 and 23. And as we move to Phase Four in 2024, again, we have continued work at Springman as well as a placeholder in there for the district office renovation. And then Phase Five will be the the last phase at Springman, getting everything wrapped up there. And then the balance of the work is really going to be just roof related. And that'll be at Hanking, Lyon, and Springman. And then the last set of projects in summer of 26 and 27 will be focused on the roof work at Atia, Blengrove, Hoffman, and Pleasant Ridge. And that's really all I've got for you as far as updates go today.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Thank you so much, Dave. That was a great presentation. Does any, Eric has something he would like to say?
I'd just like to add that what we've done is we scheduled a board subcommittee meeting before the March meeting to review in in great detail. There's a lot of deductive and additive options for the board. And they're expensive, they're detailed, it takes hours to sort of talk through. So just for the board's own knowledge, we're going to ask John and Mike to sit with the whole team after those bids really get into it. And what we try and what we'll try and come back with is just a recommendation with a clear understanding to the full board for a vote in March.
Okay, sounds good. Brian, did you want to say something? Brian, okay, if not Brian, then Scott.
Sorry, I've been talking too much tonight. I just want to ask Dave, with the change in the sequencing, is there any, do you see any way to save money there also?
As in the changing in the sequencing from 25?
That Springman sequencing, you said you were able to.
So Springman, Springman, we haven't made a change to as far as the sequencing goes and the phasing.
Okay.
The change that we were able to implement was really for, you know, the learning environments and the improvements in the classrooms across all of the schools. That was going to be a year 23 and a year 25. And then when we implemented the sprinkler work across the board for code reasonings, we were able to then push that 25 work down to 23 and move 23 to 22. So it didn't really affect Springman. Springman is going to be, like I said, a completely.
Another end.
Yep.
How are you guys are doing bids on other projects right now? How are they coming in? Are we?
Yeah, it's really competitive right now. I've been extremely encouraged with the last couple of bids that I've opened. And and we've seen, you know, anywhere from 5 to 10%, some more below budget, which has been really great. Now, these these projects are are great projects. I mean, these are your, this first phase is is got a nice schedule on it. And I think we're going to, I think we're going to get a lot of interest on it. I know, I mean, I'm getting calls every week. Dave, what do you got coming? What do you got coming? So I know there's a lot of, a lot of contractors chomping at the bit to to put hard numbers on this. So I'm encouraged with the feedback that I'm getting. You know, obviously, it is a volatile time right now. So, you know, we don't know what's what's going to happen with markets. But, you know, as far as what we're hearing right now, there's nothing crazy going on. But like I said, with with the fact that we're going to be out to bid, you know, in in this next week, I'm very much looking forward to seeing, you know, what kind of numbers we can get back and hopefully we see some savings there.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, we're looking forward to seeing some savings there, too. So let's keep our fingers crossed. Mike?
I just want to mention more for the board. John and I met with the design group earlier with Dr. Delly, Mr. Miller, and many of Steve as well, many others. One of the critical path items that we are seeing right now that we all have our eye on is the permitting process. I just want to make sure everyone is is read in that we are monitoring the Village of Glenview Submittals, the Regional Office of Education Submittals, as well as MWRD and IEP A. There are a lot of eyes watching it. Dr. Delly and Eric both are aware that if we need to bring pressure, we will do so. We have not been asked for that yet. But I just want you to be aware that there is a risk that if things don't. I guess I would say conservatively, if we don't see an improvement in pace from the village, that our April dates become at a higher level of risk of accomplishment.
Okay, so you will let us know if we need to do something about that or if we can try to do something about that anyway. Okay, any other questions at this point? Okay, I see none. I just want to say this is really exciting. It's, we've been talking in theories for so long about all of this. And we are on the threshold of starting to see these projects kick off. And it's really exciting. So we hope to hear more good news in the future. Thanks for joining us, Dave. Thanks, Steve. And we'll keep in touch, as they say.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, great. Then next item on our agenda is board policies. And there's some policies that were included in board docs. And I don't know if Dane has anything to say about it or if just go right to board member questions if anybody has any questions about those policies.
Yeah, I think you'll notice in your review of the policies that, you know, many of them have some changes in their their legal references or or some basic language changes. There are a couple that are a little more substantive, but nothing that I was planning on highlighting particularly unless someone had a question.
I'm not seeing any questions. So we can move on. Our final item for discussion is our following meeting agenda. We have the usual suspects there and the agenda will continue to get populated as we get closer to our next meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our second and final opportunity for audience comments tonight. I will just remind you again that anyone wishing to register a comment may do so using the link on the district website. We ask that you identify yourself and your connection to the district and keep your comments to three minutes. Kathy Kajigian will read your comments, but please note that the board is in listening mode only. Kathy, are there any comments at this time?
There are three comments.
All right.
All right. From Vicky Triantafulu, a parent of current District 34 student. It is very apparent that the primary reason given for why our children are not in school is limited space and capacity. Given that the district has issued bonds to finance the needed and long overdue construction, when can we expect construction to begin? It would seem appropriate to start that as soon as possible so that schools can open for full-time in-person learning in September. If that is not feasible, why can't we use Park District facilities? Has the board given any thought to administering a survey and asking parents to vote between goal and full-time in-person learning to determine what the numbers may look like if those were the only options? Next, from William Chapman, parent of current D34 students. Would the board please consider adding the number of attendees to the meeting minutes? And the final comment is from Lindsay in Candela, parent of current D34 students. I'm the parent of two Hanking boys. I am a former D34 student and a former D34 teacher. I am also a current teacher in a surrounding district. My students have been in-person majority of the year. While I obviously realize that the demographics of each district are different, I'm a bit confused as to why we are discussing construction rather than brainstorming ways to get our students in school for more than 10 hours a week. I have always been and will continue to be a supporter of D34. However, we are currently failing these kids and putting more work on these teachers with the current structure in place. We need to do better to start. Let's get rid of remote Wednesdays. That is it?
All right. Thank you, Kathy. And again, thank you to those who submitted comments tonight. We move on to our reports. We have six reports tonight. We have the FOIA report, the NSSCD Board Meeting Report, the Budget Status Report, the Current Year Financial Projections, Referendum Expense Report, and Township Treasures Report. Does the board have any questions on any of those reports? Jim?
I have a question on the Current Year Financial Projection Report. That's, that's the report, I think, that tries to reconcile how we might land relative to the current year operating budget. That's right. And I noticed in there that it's favorable, but it seems like the major reason it's favorable is because of a $2 million takeout for basically fund balance money that we didn't think we were going to spend on because of the, I think, because we rearranged the timing of when we were going to spend the fund balance. That's right. So I guess is it probably, is it better to think of what's really happening is that we're actually more like 1.3 million behind the budget? If you take that, that 2 million, it just kind of feels like it's not really, maybe it's a cash flow item, but it doesn't like, it's not really an operational item. Like, it feels like operationally, maybe we're trending behind. I think because of the high purchase services amount, like, is that, is that a fair way to characterize what's happening for us this year? This would be one year, and I tried to, you know, mention that, you know, during the the hearing. It's, it's so goofy because we adopted this budget before we fully knew we were going to go into hybrid and have midday route. There's so much stuff, expenses that either wasn't budgeted for, but we're going to incur on the same time on the revenue side. We don't have the money yet, but there's word that from the last federal stimulus, we're going to get one somewhere between 1.2 and 1.4 million. I didn't budget for it. I didn't put it in here. It's like the make whole payment. When it's in the bank and we get the wire transfer, I let the board know in the report, we got it and we're over or under. So it's, it's, it's difficult this year between what we did and didn't budget and what we are and aren't going to get the. But but you're right in that of the $3.3 million operating budget that the board adopted, 2 million right off the bat isn't going to get spent, like you mentioned. And then there's lots of other kind of stuff happening. So it's, it's really hard to say, I'll be honest. It's quite possible we could end up with a $2 million surplus this year. I mean, the additional costs for COVID, I think, is just the the issues that all schools are facing that we hope the government, federal government will probably, hopefully, some of the funding that's going to get outlaid. That that's, that would be the ask, right? It's like, hey, look, we're spending this extra money to run a school in a pandemic. Absolutely. So we don't, we don't know, know yet about FEMA and the final amounts from FEMA or from the federal stimulus. So just lots up in the air still. I understand there's some unknown revenue that maybe isn't in here. I just wanted to think about that, how that $2 million, this might be kind of covering up the trend a little bit. That's all. Yep. Good point. Okay.
Sorry about that. I was muted there for a minute. Thank you, Jim, for your question and Eric for your answer. Seeing no other questions, I will move on to our final item on our agenda, which is other business. Does any board member have any other business they would like to bring forward tonight? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved, Jim Bomster.
Second, John Haggy.
Well, you guys are slow. Maybe you guys want to stick around.
That's right.
Anyway, all right. Thank you very much. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Have a good evening. Be careful out in the snow. Stay safe and warm, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. Good night.